Okay, good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock, so I'm going to call to order the meeting of the school committee. I am going to read this comment first. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the governor of Massachusetts. It is March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify me at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that I may inform all of the participants of said recording. This is being recorded for Harbor Media. If anyone else is recording this meeting, could you please click on the Participants button at the bottom and use the Raise Hand function to let me know? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. I'm going to ask all of the members of the school committee to just identify yourself for our visitors. Michelle Eyre, if you could just say hi.
Hello, Michelle Eyre here.
Jen Benham.
Hi, Jen Benham.
Ness Corente.
Hi, Ness Corente.
Carlos De Silva.
Hello, Carlos De Silva here.
Libby Lewicki.
Hi, I'm Libby Lewicki.
And Liza O'Reilly.
Hello, Liza O'Reilly.
And I'm Carrie Nie. So the first order of business is approval of the minutes of the school committee meeting held on September 9th, 2020.
I move that we approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on September 9th, 2020.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Michelle. Is there any discussion?
Carrie, I have a comment under Section 4, the Superintendent's Report. The paragraph starting Dr. Austin confirmed the PowerPoint presentation, and it says, I'd like to add that, where it says, Liza O'Reilly commented, I'd like to add, the ninth grade reduction due to private school enrollments were historically consistent and the kindergarten numbers were typical.
Uh huh.
I had stated that, I shared that with Libby so that she would, she has those words in writing.
Great, thank you. Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes with that change?
I should move.
Okay, a second? Thank you. Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote. Michelle Eyre?
Aye.
Jen Benham?
Aye.
Ness Corente?
Aye.
Carlos De Silva?
Aye.
Libby Lewicki?
Aye.
Liza O'Reilly?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, thank you. So the next agenda item is questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please click on Participants at the bottom of the screen and use the Raise Hand function, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the school committee. As established by Mass General Laws, the responsibilities of the school committee are to, one, select and terminate the superintendent; two, review and approve budgets for the public education in the district; and three, to establish educational goals and policies for schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. So with all of that being said, if anyone has a comment on something that is not on tonight's agenda, could you again click on the Participants button at the bottom and then the Raise Hand button at the very right, bottom right? Okay, seeing none. The next is item 4.1, the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Austin?
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you again. Tonight, we're going to do a just brief, non-PowerPoint discussion of the opening of schools. We're very excited that schools opened last week, and I think quite successfully so, but I'm going to turn it over to the principals and ask them to do a brief statement for each of the schools. We'll start at the elementary, and I don't know if you have an order, ladies and gentlemen, if you do, elementary.
Yeah, I can start, Dr. Austin. So we're going to kind of divide the, sort of, all four elementaries kind of started very similarly in a similar fashion, but I'll kind of recap transportation and facilities pieces. So kudos to Patrick Cunningham, the Transportation Department, they've done a great job, you know, helping put together bus routes, getting kids to and from school safely, been quite a task, so we're off to overall a pretty good start. As you know, we had to create some newer, shorter bus routes. Many of our students are riding a different bus than they have in the past years. The bus drivers have been doing a great job making sure they have the right kids on the bus, getting the kids to and from. As you know, we're sort of, we had our meet and greets this week, so all the buses came in at 8:50, where the kids are there for an hour, brought them back at 9:50, and then we had dismissal at the end of the day for some of our other students. So all of that is off to a good start, and overall, as I said, the transportation has been working pretty well. I'll turn it over to, I think, Melissa, you're next.
Good evening, everyone. This week, keeping with our commitment to the social-emotional piece, we started our elementary meet and greets, and it was an opportunity for teachers and students to actually see each other in person in very small groups. They were introduced to all of our new health and safety protocols and were able to practice that. They also practiced arrival, new arrival and dismissal procedures, and they participated in morning meetings, so they were able to speak to certain things to their teacher on a very personal level, very small groups, about five kids in a group, and then they were bringing their devices so that they could troubleshoot any technology issues that they were having, and the teacher was able to help them one-on-one navigate Google Classroom. And just to repeat what Tony said, we're off to a great start. It was great to see the kids in the building.
Foster, we, oh, sorry. At Foster, good evening. At Foster, we also started with our meet and greets this week, and it's great to have students back in the building and to see students at arrival and families, and it's great to see familiar faces even under masks, so that is always fun. But we have had an opportunity to have our students practice, and our teachers have been modeling how to walk in the hallways using the distance markers that are placed in the floors, and we also have students who are meeting with their teachers and seeing their new space and their new desks, and being able to listen to stories about school, and so we are excited, things are going well, we are making adjustments as needed, as with any new procedure, we have found that some things have been working well, and some things need to be adjusted, and certainly we are adjusting along the way and will continue to do so. So we are excited and happy to be back. And now, Mary, I think, has the next update.
Sorry, I always have a little trouble unmuting. It's amazing after you've done it so many times and then you still have trouble with it. So just to follow up, I want to, you know, a lot of the themes that my counterparts have said, the kudos theme for sure, we've been very fortunate to work with our amazing administration, staff and families, and I for one, this is my 42nd year in Hingham, and I for one have never seen anything like this, as Dr. Austin has said often as well, but I've also never seen the type of collaboration, not that people weren't collaborative before, they were amazingly collaborative, but now it's beyond the beyond how collaborative everybody's being and how wonderful everybody's being. And I've been grateful for the collaboration of all the other principals, and especially the four elementary principals, as we meet often, so we sort of decided today that we would all just speak about different parts. And we're all grateful for our staffs and our families who are doing so much to get us back. Everybody's working so hard and they're so enthusiastic, and as other people have said, they're thrilled to be back, thrilled to see children. All of us had tears in our eyes when the children started coming in last week, and that continued today. And there have been many things that have been done to welcome the children, although we think, pictures we see on TV and whatever, we think the classrooms look stark, they actually look really beautiful. People have done a beautiful job getting them ready, and lots and lots of things to welcome them, from, as I said, from decorating the classrooms at all four schools, and I'm sure the middle school and the high school, they've written welcome letters and welcome emails, and some have even sent letters in the mail. I know at PRS, they did an all-school meeting to welcome everybody. At Easton Foster, they did a welcome video as well, and we did our traditional announcements itself, that of course always end with be kind of the necessary. So all of those things make the children feel secure and that they're coming back to a place that they left with some of the same things. Okay, we have masks on and we have to stay six feet apart, but we're still the same people, and the four of us have definitely worked closely together to make sure the children know that. We have some very exciting news, as probably a lot of you know. We originally thought that our kindergarten and grade one iPads were going to be delayed, and lo and behold, an Apple miracle happened, and they showed up just the other day, and we're grateful to Joey Andrews and Colin McGinnis, who worked tirelessly to get those ready, and we're going to start giving those out tomorrow, and don't worry, parents who missed out today, with the meet and greet, we'll make sure to find you and make sure that you get those. So we're very excited about that, and everybody's pretty excited about the way things are going. We've had a lot of positive feedback, and it is only day four, right? Did I get that right? And routines are so important to children, and really to all of us, but especially young children, and we're going to work very hard in these next few weeks to help them to understand that the routines might be a little bit different, but how important those are. As we always say, they need a lot of routine and a little bit of novelty, so we're going to work hard at that. The first six weeks of school are so important, and we're going to make it seem as seamless and, you know, just like it was back in March as we possibly can. So thank you for your time, and I also want to thank my, all of my colleagues for all the collegiality.
Thank you, Mary. Well done on the elementary staff, and you can see how close you are together as you just kind of seamlessly work together that way through the elementary report. Thank you. Eric Smith, Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Austin. Really excited to feel our building coming back to life these past few days, you know, for the first time since March 12th, we have kids in our school and it feels like a school again. It's fantastic, and it was wonderful to see them arriving last week, and to feel the energy in our school is just, it's overwhelming. I feel like our professional development activities that took place prior to the opening of school have been so worth the time and energy that went into them. I've never seen professional development put into practice so quickly and so efficiently as we have with the opening of school and our teachers with all of their new technology resources. You know, it hasn't been without challenges, clearly there are things that will pop up, students who aren't unable to get into a classroom or they drop connection, but it's also led to a bitter resourcefulness on the part of our kids, where they're reaching out to each other and texting each other and saying, hey, I can't get into this class, and I've had teachers say, for the first time ever, I'm going to tell you, text during class so that you can get that code for a student and get them in there. And it's their eagerness to get into these classes that is so encouraging, they want to be in school, they want to be with their peers, whether it be remotely or live. It's really been encouraging that we are getting there, where, you know, every day we're a little bit closer to where we need to be. The middle school has building tours scheduled for our incoming sixth graders, and, well, no longer incoming, right, they are, they're here, our new sixth graders and students new to Hingham Middle School. So we'll be opening our buildings up tomorrow and Wednesday for scheduled staggered controlled tours so the kids can come in and get a sense of what's going on at the middle school and where they need to be, but these past four days have been a really encouraging sign for what's to come, and we feel really great about what's been happening at HMS and throughout Hingham Public Schools. So thanks for all the support as we've got up and running.
Thank you, Derek. Well said. And Rick Swanson, High School.
Sure, thanks, everybody, and I'd echo a lot of what we just heard from Derek in terms of a building regaining its spirit and feeling like its soul is coming back. And for us, it's been a process that's been evolving over the course of several weeks, first with the return of our teachers, the start of the professional development activities, but then especially a huge step forward last Monday when we had our freshman orientation, and we ran the majority of that program for the first time ever virtually, but it enabled us to get almost the entire class. We had a really high participation rate participating through an online Zoom orientation last Monday morning that gave a class of about 300 new high schoolers their first opportunity to meet the building administrators, to meet their class advisors, to meet some of the seniors who are pivotal leaders in the school, and to hear some words of wisdom from them about their transition to the high school. Then in small groups, all of our freshmen were able to meet their own advisors and older peer mentors, they also met all the guidance counselors, and then had an opportunity later in the day to come into the school and for the first time to take a self-guided tour with the help of a lot of upper-class mentors there as well. So it really was a welcoming spirit in the building. We capped it off with a Clubs and Activities Fair, where our new ninth graders could learn about the breadth of extracurricular activities that are available to them at the high school. So it left me, I think, at the end of that day in the best mood that I've probably been in in months, because it felt like the building was coming back and the school was well on its way to being back where we all wanted to be. And then on Wednesday, of course, another huge step forward again, where we had the first day of school, and at the high school, we had about 40 students coming in person, everybody else logging in from home, but the feedback around the building from staff who were expressing to me, I think without exception, how good it felt to be teaching again and to be in front of their kids, even if it was happening virtually, was a tremendous feeling. And then the feedback that I've been getting as well from the community since that opening of school has been incredibly positive. We feel really good about the direction that we're moving in. On Friday, the fall athletic season got underway as well, so our fields came back to life, and a lot of our student athletes returning on Friday as well. We're very much looking forward to having more students in the building next Monday when hopefully we move into Phase 2 and start with hybrid and welcome probably upwards of around 600 students into the building. We continue to do the hard work to prepare for that and, you know, continue to navigate the challenges with eyes wide open. I did send an email message to our whole high school community today with an important reminder about etiquette and behavior expectations for online learning. And we have had a couple of incidents in the last couple of days in terms of students not following, as well as we might have hoped, some of the rules around online learning. And, you know, that's just the reality of working in a high school, I think, but I would emphasize that more than 99% of our classes have gone on without issue and that everybody's feeling really good about where we're moving, and we're excited about continuing to move in that direction.
Thank you, Rick, and congratulations to all of you, administrators, principals, assistant principals, directors and teachers for opening schools. This has been an incredible labor over the last several months preparing for this event, going through very difficult times and working under hard circumstances. You've done amazing work, and we should celebrate the fact that we're started. We may not be perfect, but we're in and we're going, and I'm very proud of all of you for such an incredible job well done, also proud of the community for their hard work and vigilance and staying true to the CDC guidelines and making this happen. It is clearly a community effort, and that brings me to the topic of, so the health metrics right now, we are in the yellow, which is a caution area, because we had 16 new cases over the last two weeks. I will remind the community, it is incredibly important, we want to be in school, and keeping those health metrics low, keeping the cases down, keeping things under control as far as the health goes, is incredibly vitally important to our work. We do not want to go in and be out the next day. We want to be in, we want to go, we want our students there, and we want to progress through the phases as quickly as we can, but also in a safe manner. I will say that we do anticipate, as Rick just mentioned, Phase 2 beginning on the 28th, which is a week from today, it will be hopefully a very happy day when we're getting one of our cohorts in. So right now, the elementary buildings and some of the other buildings are seeing about 25% participation. On Monday, it'll be 50, and so that's a, that's a big jump for us. The incredible work and the preparation that's gone into that, I think, listening to the principals today and thinking about all of the incredible protocols that they've, that were nicely built on paper, had to be adjusted and readjusted when reality comes and practice happens, but they're making it happen. So we're very excited about that, and we'll continue moving forward on the 28th with Phase 2 at this time. I will also tell the community, I don't control the metrics. If something were to happen, if some sort of outbreak were to happen, I'll have to act accordingly, and that should not be a surprise to anyone, but I don't anticipate that. We're going to hope, just like all of you, that we're able to get in and keep moving. On October 19th, I will come back to you again with a report on the metrics, how we're doing on Phase 2, and then hopefully we can talk a little bit about what's Phase 3 look like, and so we can move forward. We're all very, very excited about having all of our students, and we can't wait to move forward. So thank to all of you, thanks to our teachers who are rocking it and making remote learning very different in the spring. We've been telling parents a long time that it would be different in the spring, and clearly that is the gate. I've heard the same remarks that Mr. Swanson has, that people are really rocking it and great professional development, incredible hard work, and people really coming through for the students at Hingham. So I think it's a proud moment for all of us, so thank you.
Yeah, I just want to echo your thanks, to thank you, Dr. Austin, and to all of the administrators and teachers that, I mean, I was on a call earlier and to a couple of the principals were talking about the importance of routine and for children, especially the beginning of the year, and you've had to reinvent routines and are continuing to, and train the staff and train the kids, and so it's a monumental task, so I just want to say thank you too. Does anyone on the committee have any questions or comments? Okay, not seeing any. If there are any about the school reopening that was just discussed, if any of the members of the public, again, click on the Participants button at the bottom and then the Raise Hand bottom right. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to 5.2, which is other communications. Does anyone else have communications that came through? Oh, sorry, we're at 5.1, I'm sorry, communications received by the superintendent.
I thought you were skipping over me. That was okay, hold on.
It's not that.
You know, I want to give, first, I've received a ton of emails in response to our reopening. For the most part, you know, they've highlighted that remote is, remote learning today is very different than it was in the spring. It's robust, and if anything, now we have to adjust again because I also hear the other side of this is too much screen time, it's too robust, and we need more of a break. But I think that that's a, that's an okay place to be, knowing that we have to adjust and move, but I want to just commend the work of all the people that signed this, this program, all the teachers' work that you put in with the leaders of the grade level teams and departments for just such a phenomenal job of putting this together, and of course, our folks who put down the professional development, which did ready these teachers for the job and did a phenomenal job quickly in a wonderful academy that prepared people well. So I haven't heard much of that. I've also heard, I want to make sure that I mention, I do hear a lot from parents, particularly in the K1, K1-2 grade span, you know, who are continuing to encourage us to do what we can to prioritize K1-2, and I want to say a couple of things about that. One, we absolutely do agree with you, we understand the necessity of prioritizing K1-2 in particular as we move into remote learning. I will tell you, the principals are incredibly dedicated, as well as Central Office working together, to determine how best to maximize our learning opportunities for particularly kids in K1-2. This is not a matter of not wanting to, we all want the children there, but we want them safely. I also want to remind people about the importance of this first eight days and why it was designed this way. First of all, we heard loud and clear what people told us in the spring, we weren't prepared for remote learning, we weren't able to shift quickly, there was a large learning curve, you know, it wasn't what people expected. We heard that loud and clear, and we focused on remote learning and what would happen if we had to be remote again. While we don't want to possibly look at that in the future, it is clearly possible that we could be in remote learning at some point in the future again before we're over with this COVID-19 crisis. This eight days is so important to establish those routines with students, to establish remote learning in today's remote learning environment, to prepare the technology, to fix the bugs now, while we have a chance to do that in a fairly controlled setting, and those are incredibly important. It's also important for our faculty and our teachers, our administrators, to continue to work out the bugs of our routines in schools. As many have said to all of you that they've had to readjust and adjust and recalculate and do and redesign many protocols, even the ones that were written very plainly had to be rewritten, and they're learning that and they're using these eight days to the absolute benefit of our students. We want to make sure that when we invite your students into our schools, that we are 100% ready to have them and that it's successful. That's more important at this point, so we do appreciate the eight days. It's not because we weren't ready for them, it's because we needed that time and to establish routines with them, to establish the remote learning, and to prepare all the things that need, that we need in order to be successful on day one. So I appreciate all of the comments from the community, know that we stand with you, we stand at the same place you are, and we are very, very dedicated to our, in particular, our youngest students. So thank you for your patience and your grace, this much appreciated, but again, thanks to everyone for their comments. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else in the committee have communications? Okay, seeing none, we move on to 6, which is unfinished business. We don't have any today, which is unusual. So 7 is new business, 7.1, to discuss the memorandum of agreement with HEA Unit B for successor contract for 2020 to 2023 and to act as appropriate. And I believe we have Board of Selectmen Chair Mary Power on the line too. To, hi, Mary. Okay, so Liza, would you like to fill us in on this?
Sure. So we went through the negotiations with HEA Unit B, this is the parent educators union, and we actually completed these negotiations back in July, just taken some time to get the documentation together. So we come to agreement on a new three-year term, so through August 2023, and a few of the benefits for this unit, we agreed to increase some sick leave over the three-year course of the agreement. At the end of the last agreement, for the, it's tiered of sick time based on the number of years that people have worked in the district, because as they've worked longer, they know our kids better and they have much more experience. So for people with zero to three years of service, actually their sick time stays the same at seven days. For people with four to seven years of service, they had 10 days, they will now have 11 days for the first two years of the contract, and then 12 days the third year of the contract. And then for those who are our longest-serving parent educators with more than eight years of service, they had 13 days, and we increased it to 14 days the first two years of the agreement, and 15 days the third year of agreement, and that's equivalent to what our teachers have as well. We also updated the parental leave clause in their agreement to make it consistent with the teachers' agreement, so that this covers birth parents and non-birth parents. And then we also agreed to providing them, at the end of the school year, they would be notified with a letter of reasonable assurance that we would be hiring them again the next year. That was something that they were looking for. Their hours would depend on what services our students need the following year, but at least they would receive that letter that we would want them to come back. And as, as everyone wants to know, we also awarded them with a 2% salary increase each year, and that's consistent with other units. And then we also, they had also asked if we would agree to releasing certain members of the bargaining unit. The parent educators also include some clerical workers, including for the special education staff, some secretaries, and then also they're called office parents. and then also, they're called Office Parent Educator Secretaries, but they're actually the receptionists in our elementary schools. And so, we agreed to release them from this unit, so that the unit is now focused on teaching as opposed to the clerical people. So that was mutually agreed. So those are the basic terms of the agreement. It's very cordial and fairly easy negotiation, and so I encourage everyone to ratify this.
Okay, thank you, Liza, and to the salary negotiations team and administrators who participated in the negotiations. Does anyone on the committee or Board of Selectmen have any questions or comments? Okay, not seeing any. Are there any members of the public that have any questions or comments? Okay, not seeing any. I will take a motion to approve.
Okay, I will make a motion to vote to approve the memorandum of agreement with HEA Unit B for Successor Contract for the 2020 to 2023 time period.
Okay, do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Thanks, Carlos. Okay, rule call, vote. Michelle Air?
Aye.
Jen Benham?
Aye.
Ness Corente?
Aye.
Carlos De Silva?
Aye.
Lili Luiki?
Aye.
Liza O'Reilly?
Aye.
And Mary Power?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So the contract is ratified. That's great. Let's see, the seven, and Mary, thank you for attending tonight to do this. Seven point three is to consider homeschool applications for 55 students. Dr. Austin?
We still have seven point two.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Oh, my gosh, yeah. Okay, so to hear your update on the EPI Task Force, I apologize. Dr. LaVilla?
Yes, good evening, Chairney. Good evening, committee. I'm happy to be here to talk to you all tonight about the work. So the last update, the work that's been completed since the last update, which was back in July. So our, since our last update, I'm happy to report that we have completed a total of, I'm just counting them up right now, five separate book groups on various titles related to educational equity. Of the total participants, we had 46 unique participants in the books, in the book groups. We had a total of nine faculty members who read two books, a total of six who read, a total of six who read three, and a total of four who read actually four of the books. So all told, 46 educators participated over the summer in the book groups. We also completed a classroom library audit. So under the leadership of Lori Lucas, and actually, on the book group front, I should, I want to thank Camille Martel, who read the discussion on the book Between the World and Me, Gus Haflin, who led the book discussion for White Fragility, Cara Roth, actually, who led two book groups, one on Stamped and another on So You Want to Talk About Race, and finally, to Rose Papouga, who led the discussion for the group I'm Still Here. So without them, all members of our Equity Team, we really would not have been able to do that work, on top of all of the reopening plans that we've been working on for the district. I just want to thank those educators for their time and commitment to that topic and ensuring a great environment, a learning environment for our students. Beyond that, I will also note that we have also completed, under Lori Lucas's leadership, she ran a subgroup of teachers at the elementary level, looking specifically at the addition of books into classroom libraries to bring different cultures and different groups more into the narrative as our students are reading. And each grade level from pre-K through fifth has a recommended total of 19 texts that we're hoping to purchase for every classroom, in terms of the classroom library, as well as additional sets for the school libraries. We're currently seeking partnerships. Lori's working with a Black-owned bookstore in Cambridge to actually purchase and order the books through, and we're looking for funding partners to help us actually purchase the texts. Beyond that, Carolyn Bixby actually is also working on community partnerships to really expand those class libraries beyond the core texts. So every classroom, we're hoping to give 19 books to. But on top of that, that was sort of the, the 19 was the number that the group of teachers felt was sort of essential for classroom libraries. And I can certainly share with the committee, if you're interested, sort of by grade level, what those 19 titles are and the authors. But beyond those titles, there were a number of other works that were suggested that Carolyn took the leadership to really research more and actually is looking for funding partners in the community as well. So we're thoughtful of the extent of budget being what it is relative to reopening costs and expenditures at other places. We're looking to sort of traditional PTOs or the Hingham Education Foundation or other community partners who would be open to helping us launch our equity libraries across all of our classrooms. The next piece of work that lays ahead of us is to really unpack the SWOT analysis. So the last time, when the district kicked off the conversation with Johnny Cole, who's the Director of Equity Inclusion in Lexington, when he came and spoke to our faculty, the faculty after his keynote actually broke into grade level and department groups to sort of talk about the strengths, the weaknesses, as well as the opportunities and threats to our mission around equity as we began the work. And so, our team, it's really on me, I'm thoughtful of reopening and having all of our teachers really be focused on our reopening, particularly through Phase One and Two. But we do have a date, we need to actually set a date to actually process that SWOT analysis, and we're actually going to be partnering with a professor from BU to support our vision and implementation toward the development of our Equity and Inclusion Plan, which is still on track, probably for December of 2020, for launch, hopefully in January. You know, with the reopening plans, while equity continues to be an area of focus for us, we are thoughtful in terms of organizational capacity of how much people can sort of take on at any given time. So while it's a very important topic for us, we're not as far along, right, of course, as we would have been at this time of the year, where the goal was to really have that plan done by June. But given the school shutdown and the closure, that really delayed our timeline a few months. So we're still in progress. We actually completed a lot of work over the summer. Our educators stepped up and participated in those working groups, as well as discussion groups, to identify those class texts for the classroom libraries. And we're looking forward to looking into our SWOT analysis and then developing an Equity and Inclusion Plan, which will include overarching goals, as well as action steps to complete with tangible outcomes for each of our overarching goals.
Great. Thank you very much for your work on this. Do you have a timeline in mind for the SWOT analysis?
To have that completed, you mean? Probably in time for the October School Committee Update, if we meet toward the second meeting. I'm just thoughtful of September 21st. The analysis actually was done under the leadership of, oh, give me a minute. Hold on, Boris Samirov over at Plymouth River. He actually ran the discussion groups and actually has a fairly detailed-out analysis from the total responses of the faculty that we just have not yet, we have not yet processed as an equity team. And that really has to do with my calendar and not necessarily having that booked yet. But again, we wanted to make sure we got schools open and everybody was settled. And likely, this week is actually working with my assistant Gabby to reach out to the team to give some choices for dates for our next meeting.
Great, thank you.
But locally, by the October update, I'll have more information for you.
That would be great, thank you. So does anyone on the committee have any questions or comments for Dr. LaVilla? Liza?
Yeah, Jamie, I would love to get the information about the books that you're looking for, and, yeah, and any idea of, you know, dollars you're looking for. I think that would be really helpful to post on the website, if that can get up there, so that we can draw people's attention to it and try and gain some community support. Yeah, the more information and details we have, the better that we can share that with everyone. It's very important. I had the luxury of being invited to participate in a book group. I have to admit, because of my role and things I was doing for the School Committee, I didn't get to participate in all of them, but I did read the book. And the one time I joined the conversation, I was very impressed with the thoughtfulness and dedication of the staff to thinking about these issues and really tackling them. And I'm glad to hear that we do have, you know, a broad swath of teachers who paid attention to this very important issue going on in our society. And their eyes were wide open, and they were taking it all in of how it was impacting them and their students as well, and they really understood that. So thank you to all the staff for participating. I think it will make us all better going forward.
And to that point, Liza, we do have an equity page coming for the website, which will give an update with all of our presentations, our materials, our book lists. The way we left it with Lori was we were actually now pricing everything. So we had the titles, and we're trying to find, make sure that the bookstore we're working with actually can get that number of copies, because we are ordering at least 16, 17 sets for the district of each grade level.
That's great. And just as a follow-up, if you could share that list with all of us, I think a lot of people would be interested.
Okay.
Ness, did I see your hand up next?
Yes. Yeah, I was going to echo what Liza said about the book list. If we can get that, that'd be great. And I appreciate you using the Black-owned bookstore from Cambridge. I appreciate that. One question in addition to that is, when you were doing SWOT analysis, was any parent or community feedback taken or given on how things are going in the district? Is that incorporated?
No, because the exercise was for the faculty.
Okay.
One of the things the equity team, what we have not yet discussed, is how to now replicate that conversation with other constituent groups. Right? So we started with the faculty and their understanding of the community. What we've not yet done is have that same conversation in the same structured format with members of the community. So one of the items for our agenda at our next meeting was actually talk about a community partnership and how to engage with members of the community to get their perspective on the same issue. So we have the faculties' sort of perception of the community and the organization's readiness to embark on this work, but we don't necessarily have the perspective of our faculty, of our community.
Okay. But that is on the agenda to do.
Talk about how, right, whether we run focus groups, or whether we go to PTOs, or we sort of get on their agenda to sort of talk about, whether we send out a survey. We're thoughtful of survey fatigue, right, relative to our information. So we're thoughtful of how to have the conversation to sort of get a sense of the community's readiness to undergo the work. Yeah, but we're not quite sure how yet. But if anybody, I mean, if a member of the committee would be interested in joining the discussion to sort of help maybe give some insight to the team of how best to do that work, I'm sure we'd be open to hearing that feedback.
I would love to join.
Actually, I'll let you know as it unfolds, if that's okay with you, Carrie.
Yep, yep, that's fine. Michelle, did you have your hand up?
It did, yes, thank you. I do know that there are several members, Jamie, just for your knowledge, that there's several members of the Hingham Unity Council here on this call tonight, and I know they are chomping at the bit to help. So when things are needed from the community, I know those folks would be interested. And then I just wanted to point out that I was going to do this under my, under the sort of subcommittee reports, but I think it's, in context, a good time to bring it into the conversation now, that I had attended the Metco ran a reopening of schools with an anti-racist lens, sort of virtual conference a few weeks ago. And it was really, really informative. It was really great conversations. And I just made a couple of points that they had brought up that may be for yourself and your committee to think about as we're going through the reopening of schools and trying to do those with an anti-racism lens. So some of the things that they had pointed out were that, you know, these accounts that are, these acts that are happening and being recorded are not new in this country, right? They are just finally being recorded and being publicized. And that that's important for folks to understand, so not just students, but sort of all, you know, communities to understand that what's happening is not something new, it's just finally being recorded and being publicized. And that's putting, it's putting pressure on districts to work with this, right? That even in the midst of a pandemic, that we can't put this work on the back burner, right? There's an urgency to it, and it has to be done regardless of the pandemic. So it's yet another thing to add to the district work and things that need to be done. But, you know, it's, you know, the goal of the districts and their priority to ensure the safety and well-being of all students, and in this moment, in particular, students of color, because they do need, they are going through some additional stresses, in particular, because of the pandemic as well. So school districts need to be mindful of that. So some of their suggestions were that upon arriving back to school, that we try to build a community and space for BIPOC students, particularly because, and it's sort of a common misconception, but like from the Metco Program students, they don't necessarily know each other, right? So people sort of think like, oh, they're all together in the Metco Program, but they don't. They may not have gone to schools together in the past. So to build a community of those students together is important for us to do in our buildings, to really open the lines of communication between the faculty, the students, and to help them open up lines of communication to each other. And in particular, and I know this is a goal of the district, particularly at the high school, is to really make that connection between student and faculty or staff member, and to really pay attention to that in our school districts, that we need to particularly make sure those students have that good, at least one adult person in the building that they can go to when they are struggling or they just need someone to speak with. And I think really, just they were talking about then just like setting the tone in the classroom, and when you're talking about, I guess, building into the curriculum more than what they call the legacy of competency, that you need to give more context around people of color and their contributions to our society, and not just the exceptionalism, right? It's more than just MLK. It's more than just slavery. We have to talk about the contributions that these folks have made to our country every day, and not just talk about the negative things, but also talk about the contributions and the positive things, and to try to work that kind of into the curriculum as organically as possible. So those are just some of my takeaways for the work that is being done here and in the classrooms every day with the students.
Thank you. Yeah, and I just want to thank you again for all of your work on this. I do think it's really important. At some point, COVID will be behind us, and so we need to move this forward, as, without taxing everyone, you know, I hear what you're saying about the institutional limits, but we definitely don't want to drop this. Is there anything else from anyone on the committee? Okay, not seeing anyone. If any members of the public would like to speak, again, click on Participants and the Raise Hand button. I see Katie Sutton.
Thank you, Carrie. Yeah, I'm here as a mom, but also Hingham Unity Council. And thank you for the work you've done so far, but I was a little disappointed because none of the stuff that Dr. LaVilla just reported was new from the last report. I believe the SWOT was done last fall, almost a year ago. And I know that I'm so sensitive to the chaos that COVID has brought to the district, so I don't want to sound ungrateful. I know that you guys are working really hard, but I think we also know, and Michelle alluded to the fact, that people of color are even more affected by COVID, and the inequities are even worse. And so I think that we really need to kind of step it up in terms of dealing with this, this commitment we've made. So I just, I just would urge you to please, you know, try to move on this as fast as you possibly can. Like I said, I understand that you've been going through a lot with the start of school, but I think we really need to prioritize this, and I just request that you do. Thank you.
And just to clarify, the SWOT analysis was done in March, not last year.
Okay, sorry.
It was done the week before the school shutdown.
Okay.
That's a little bit, I hear your feedback. I appreciate it, and we are working as fast as we can. I just wanted to give some context if the community doesn't believe that we've been not doing anything for a year. It's just been since the shutdown where it did delay the initial projection. Our goal was to actually have the work done by last June. But with that shutdown, and with our faculty really having to turn attention to the, but your points are well taken. I just wanted to be clear that the community, the faculty, rather, engaged in this work the first week of March on our release day, where we did have Johnny Cole, our keynote, come and sort of start the conversation, and then the next week, we shut down. So we are working as fast as we can, understanding the, sort of, the limits of what people can have in terms of capacity right now to take on. But what we are, again, our equity team is But what we are, again, our equity team is incredibly engaged and made up of educators who are willing to take it on, it's just a matter of getting them in a room and getting it going. Yeah, I do appreciate that feedback.
Thank you, and I'm happy to help out in any way I can. I think there are a lot of people, as Ness alluded and Michelle or someone, we have people, oh, Carrie, people on the committee who would love to be of help if we can.
Thank you, Katie. Chrissy Roberts.
Chrissy Roberts. Hi, Sam, may I just wanted to let you know, you can put me down on your list if there are for members of the public that can help fundraising and taking a look at the books and anything else you need from a parent slash PTO perspective, happy to help. And thanks for all you're doing.
Wonderful, you know what, I'll connect you with Carolyn Bixby. How about that?
Okay, thank you.
Chrissy, would you mind just shooting me an email so I have your email address?
Yep.
Awesome, thanks very much.
Okay, I don't see any other hands, so just thank you again for the update and we're looking forward to hopefully hearing it at the end of October. The next one, seven point three, that is to consider the homeschool applications for fifty-five students.
Well, thank you. This is a continuation of of our last conversation. And as we've said, we've experienced a very high number of of homeschool applications. We have certainly done our due diligence on those and I offer you tonight, the fifty-five. We'll say out of that fifty-five, the vast majority are kindergarten, first grade, which are thirty-three out of that fifty-five. And and so we do anticipate, and I would anticipate, you will be approving them for this year, but I would anticipate they'll be back to the district once we get to normal operations. So I do recommend that you approve the fifty-five, which includes eight kindergarten students, twenty-five first grade students, ten second grade, seven third grade, two fourth grade, one fifth grade, two sixth.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone on the committee have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve these.
Be glad to do that. I'll move that we approve the homeschool applications of the fifty-five students. You're Liza Wood's part.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Thanks, Libby. And so we'll do a roll call vote. Michelle, air.
Aye.
Jen Bennett.
Aye.
Ness Parenti.
Aye.
Carlos De Silva.
Aye.
Libby Lewicki.
Aye.
Liza O'Reilly.
I'm an aye, but I just want to clarify Carlos's motion that it's not just for the Root Pods students. It's for the fifty-five students as listed in the document, just.
Thank you.
To make sure, okay.
So fifty-five students.
Yeah.
Okay, and I am an aye as well. Thank you, everyone. Seven point four is to review subcommittee and project reports. So we will start with Michelle.
Hello. I already gave my, I gave my Metco, one part of the Metco report. There was also Dr. Austin and Carol Perez hosted a meeting with Metco families last week just to go over sort of last minute questions and comments from Metco parents. And I joined that conversation as well as several teachers in the district. So it was a good conversation. They just went over sort of last minute questions and comments about the the school reopening and primarily a lot of that was geared towards transportation. But that was a good conversation. Other reports, we, a couple of days ago, we had a meeting with the SBA, the MSBA. It was regarding the foster school. So with everything else that is going on, we are still moving ahead with foster school. So it was a great meeting with the MSBA. Myself was there as the Foster School Committee Building Liaison to the School Committee. Carrie attended as chair. Linda Hill and Ray Estes from the Building Committee were there. Town people were there. Mary Power attended as Board of Selectmen Chair. The town administrative administrator assistant, Michelle Montseguer was there, as well as Dr. Wilcox and John Ferris and Dr. Austin. And we went over the enrollment study that is being, that is underway. So the preliminary preliminary enrollment study being done. And that's an early but very critical part of the whole plan for the design because we want to make sure that we have the right sized facility that is going to be the most cost effective to build, to operate and to maintain. And the enrollment study is a big part of that. So so the foster school building with work with the MSBA continues, which is great. So we're really right on track with where we would have expected to be at this time despite things happening with the pandemic.
Great, thank you. Jen, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, Ness, do you have anything?
I just wanted to note that HEF met for the first time. They, it was the same day as our last school committee meeting, so I couldn't attend, but they were starting their planning session on September ninth.
Great, thank you. Carlos, do you have anything?
Just to report that I attend my first meeting of this nap. Great group of people. They are looking for new ways of raising some funds to help our special students. And obviously Pizza Palooza cannot replace and that that's a big loss. So they are looking for different ways of raising more money. We are in the process of scheduling our first meeting of the Facilities and Capital Subcommittee. So I'll keep you guys informed of what's taking place there.
Thank you, Carlos. Libby, do you have anything? No, okay.
No.
Okay, thanks. Liza?
Yeah, so salary negotiations we will go over in an executive session. And also in the master plan, I just wanted to let people know we've been working with the consultants to refine that plan. And there will be a public session to hear the draft of that plan on Wednesday, October seventh. So you should watch for that in the listing of public meetings. And also for the Capital and Facilities Subcommittee, I forwarded all of you an email today. There is a group affiliated with the Greener Hingham Committee that's looking into electric school buses and wanted to get our involvement in that opportunity. And so I forwarded that on to Carlos, Ness and Jen to get involved with. It involves a lot of money, which we have a lot of other priorities of money. And so we can have the greater community evaluate that as well. So you guys can take that on. So that's it.
All right, thank you, Liza. I will say that the policy committee, Subcommittee is going to meet on Wednesday morning to continue revising the policy manual. We took a pause on that, but we're going to start, start that up again. There is a forecast meeting with the Board of Selectmen Advisory Committee and Town Administrators on Wednesday, September twenty-third. So we'll update you all after that. And then I just wanted to ask everyone to reach out to the principals for their school council liaison schools, just to introduce yourselves and get on the distribution list. I don't know how active the school councils are right now, but just so they know who everyone is, that'd be helpful. Next one is to receive notification of the appointments for the 2020 to 2021 school year of Megan Gavin, long-term substitute special education teacher at Plymouth River School. So welcome, Megan. Seven point six is to receive notification of the advancements on the salary scale on September first, 2020 of Elizabeth Dorr Perkins to M plus fifteen, Robert Tews to B plus fifteen, and Leanne Turnack to M. Seven point seven is to receive notification of the resignation of teacher Catherine Avalon. Number eight is other items not reasonably known forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Does anyone have anything for that?
Eric, can I just?
Yeah.
I neglected to say thank you to the PTOs for their amazing support of everyone this week. Signs on the, on our town office was amazing. The work they're doing to support our teachers and just want to say thank you. I neglected to say that in my, my report, but they're amazing. They make us feel welcomed and, you know, respected, and I very much appreciate that. I know that the other administrators and teachers just, thank you to all of our amazing PTOs for their huge work for us.
Great, thank you. I would second that as well. I see a hand up. Jamie Pedizano.
Oh, yes, thanks so much. I meant to raise my hand after the school reopening report and it just wasn't quite quick enough. So I just asked a question. The, the school, the COVID nineteen daily self-checklist that the school nurses sent out, we saw that, that's great, very clear protocols about what to do when a student is displaying symptoms. We'd like to know what the protocol is if someone in the household, so the student is asymptomatic, but let's say a parent showing symptoms on that checklist. What's the protocol in that case before COVID nineteen is ruled out?
Yeah, I don't think I have a nurse, I don't think I have Deb Whiting or anybody on here that has direct knowledge of that. Oh, Kelly, you're there, thank you.
Hi, Paul. Yes, so we would contact Kathy Crowley or if the parent suspected they had COVID, they may contact the Board of Health, but we don't consider a close contact of a close contact to quarantine. Is that?
But there's asymptomatic transmission. So you could have a student in a home with a parent who is symptomatic, an asymptomatic student who's in a household with someone who's symptomatic. We could even have a case where that symptomatic household, you know, family member is getting a COVID nineteen test and waiting, awaiting the results. And the protocol does not give guidance to keep that student home.
I agree, we do.
So a parent could be waiting for test results. We are not suggesting that people keep the asymptomatic student home?
We do have them contact their primary care physician. And a lot of the primary care physicians are suggesting the entire family quarantine.
But we are, we're so grateful for the thousands and thousands of hours that you have all spent this summer to make reopening work. And I just wonder if all of that work is put at risk if we don't clearly tell parents in a case where someone in the household is awaiting results, it might be a good idea to keep the student home. Have you considered that? Have you considered that as part of the protocol?
Can I just say that a couple of things, like for us to be able to convince that, so it's not wrong that you would ask the parent to consider that might be the best thing to do. The question is, can I force them to do that?
Of course not.
And I can't. And so I think there is a good question and I agree with you because the first thing we're going to do, we're going to be picking up the phone, we're going to talk to our Board of Health. We're going to be talking through this and say, here's our concern. We're going to be sharing that concern with our, those parents. I agree with you, I want to keep it out of our school, I want to keep our staff safe, I want to keep our students safe if they're not transmitting it back to you. So absolutely, your point is incredibly well taken. CDC doesn't cover everything. That's, that's clear and they change guidance all the time. And so we need to stay on top of that. I will say I'm incredibly fortunate to the nurses that I meet every week. I have a COVID response team that meets and talks about data. And I have nearly daily conversations with the Board of Health. So we have a great network of people. You're absolutely correct. We can be certainly recommend to the parent, you know, and particularly we're able to go to remote learning that quickly. I mean, that's part of what we're doing right now. We're able to switch to remote, you can go home, you continue your education. I don't think that's a bad request. I don't think that's a bad recommendation. So yes, we do consider those things and we'll continue to talk about it if that were the case. I mean, I think this is, to go even further, there are going to be all kinds of these nuances that we're dealing with, whether it's a friend who has it or whoever has something. There'll be all kinds of nuances that we're going to have to work through and we're going to be vigilant on those and need to work through them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Joshua Ross.
Hey, hi everyone, Joshua Ross, one twenty-five Long Pawtucket Road. So I'm glad to hear that the Foster Building Committee is moving forward and I know it's something that we haven't talked about in a few months, obviously. But given the fact that now that we've, you know, you've guys met with the MSBA and some additional money was approved at town meeting, is there a schedule that's been put together for some sort of important dates that we need to hit? Or, you know, when's the anticipated special meeting that that we might be voting on this and things like that, so we can start as a community to start talking about this? I mean, clearly there's some other big expenditures coming up for the town. I just don't want Foster to get lost in this whole thing. You know, clearly, you know, Foster is a, a, a big component. And we talk about going back to school and some of the challenges that the building has faced. And I just want to make sure that this is kept in the forefront of everyone's mind as we start really ramping up with the whole building safety, building and some of the other stuff. So my other question, and now I kind of feel bad asking after the nice things Paul just said about the PTOs is, is there any updates on the negotiations between the HEA and, and the administration regards to going back in phase two next week with synchronous asynchronous learning?
Let me answer your first question first, all right? This should put me on the spot. First, Josh, it may be quiet on your end regarding what you're hearing about Foster. Clearly not on our end, where John Ferris and Beth and a lot of people have been putting together enrollment studies and working on those things. So we have, we have a pretty strict deadline with the MSBA, once required by such and such date. We have one of those days coming up, I think gone is the twenty-eighth of September.
That's correct.
Things that are due, yeah, and so that's coming right up. We have all those things done, which then would set us into another phase. I think they would be looking at October, November, John, for, for a feasibility vote?
The feasibility vote, I mean, if we could push it up to November, but it's scheduled right now for December. So we're in the eligibility period right now, Josh. So we, and, and MSBA has a structured timeline for that. You know, we started this back in April, we had, we've had meetings and, you know, we're meeting deadlines for the enrollment studies and the educational profile. And now we have to do the maintenance on the twenty-eighth, we have to have our enrollment certified. And then we've always been striving to get that, to perhaps have that ready, all that ready for our November board meeting where they will allow us to get into feasibility. Once the board, MSBA board votes, we can go right into a feasibility study with the MSBA. And, you know, that, that period of time actually will take as much time as we really need. But the, according to the MSBA phasing right now, the earliest that they'll have a vote for a project will be July of twenty-two. So, you know, we're well on schedule. And that money that we had, the seven fifty plus the extra three fifty supplemental, those two components will satisfy us up until July twenty-two, at which point we'll have to go try to take a vote to get money for the overall construction of the project. So it's all, everything's very much scheduled and we're on our, we're on target for everything and doing what we can to sort of have, you know, push it up. We don't know, so they were scheduled us for November, for December, really. You know, we're thinking, you know, based on the meeting, we may have a November vote, a board vote for November, so we get started in a month early. You know, and we have a pretty, we have a good experience building committee too, you know, that sort of knows how to move through things. So it seems like a long time with their phasing of getting from, you know, we're going to go all the way through twenty-one and halfway through twenty-two before we get to a vote. That's the MSBA's phase and schedule right now. And I can't promise anything, but, you know, because of what's happened for a district that's ready and continues to go down this path, you know, would we be pushed up? I mean, in one sense, I'm hopeful we might, but the worst case scenario will be July of twenty-two, we'll have that vote for, for the construction project.
Okay, that, that, that makes sense, I appreciate it. I just, I just wanted to sort of get an update. I know we haven't talked about Foster.
We're on it all the time.
I know you guys are, but.
We still are, and we'll be starting building committee meetings up very soon. We just have to get through this, this stage. We'll get our enrollment certified and then get the maintenance thing in. And I think by November, you know, we'll probably end up having a building committee meeting next month in October.
Okay.
Just to kind of update everybody. Just to kind of update everybody, okay, here's where we're at, folks, here's where we're heading to, so we can kind of get a, a pet of steam up, and then perhaps, you know, get into something where we'll have regular meetings, at which point we'll be meeting weekly.
Okay.
You know, as we start going through feasibility, to, to get everything we need to get, because we got to get an OPM on board, then we're going to get a designer on board. So the pace of this activity, once we get that vote from the MSBA to go to feasibility, will rapidly pick up.
Okay. And, and so just, sorry, one more question. The, the enrollment study that you guys are doing now is different than all the, the enrollment studies that the district has done in the past? I know there's been a bunch that's done.
Yeah, the enrollment study that we did, Josh, informed this one, helped him inform this one, but really, the MSB has their own formula where they were looking at, you know, what do you have for building permits? What kind of projects have you had outstanding? What do you have for elderly housing? What do you have for low income housing? Here's where your role has looked like over the years. Here's the number of sales you had in the community. Here's the fertility rate. Here's the number of people, you know, here's where your rates projected to be. You know, when we had this meeting on, it was last week, I think on the 16th or so, the MSB has given a thoughtful approach, and I think their numbers are well in line with our numbers, if not maybe thinking we're going to be a little bigger than what our numbers might have been.
Okay, thank you.
And Josh, I thought you were, I was about ready to dance, because I thought I might avoid your question tonight, but thank you very much for bringing that up.
My pleasure.
Paul, can, just, sorry, Carrie, I, I'm just noticing, I think somebody has a question maybe related to Foster. She, I'm sorry, I don't want, Lynn Barclay, because I saw your hand, like, physically raised on the camera, so it's still related to Foster.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, Lynn Barclay, 11 Cottage Street. I, I, I just kind of want to get back to the topic that we're talking about with COVID and, and the school. First of all, I just wanted to start by saying, I think you guys have done a wonderful job. I, I, I can't imagine being in your shoes, and I love the article that you guys put out last week in, in the Hingham Anchor. I think it was very well done. I have two questions tonight, and that is, you know, my daughter is in eighth grade, and we were sent a survey as to whether she could, she could bus to school, and then I was told that she's not. So I'm just wondering, why is that, and why can't I get her bus to school? Because I've got, and I, I've got an eighth grader, and I've got an 11th grader. So basically, I have to, and I'm in the farthest part of town, so I have to get her to the middle school at 7:30, and then I got to race back and get my high schooler back to, to his school. It's, it's really not a convenient situation. I'm just wondering, why is it that I can't get her bus to school? That is my first question.
Do you want to do the first one first, or? I'll, I'll do the first one first. Thank you. And first of all, we, we've spoken about this a number of times in school committee, and a lot of this is about, because of the, the restrictions that DESI has placed on us in regards to transportation, we've had to reduce our ridership by almost two thirds, or actually a little bit better than two thirds. And so where we had 77 student buses can now only take 25 students. So we had to adjust, and we've talked about this a number of times, we had to adjust that by law. And, and I also agree that probably not everybody hears the school committee meeting. I, I get that, too. By law, we have to transport K to 6. And we have talked about the fact that I just can't, the fact is, that any given day, we have over a thousand students at the middle school. The best we're going to be able to do on our busing situation is probably 500 a day to be able to transport that. And so obviously, I can't transport everyone. Now, that's in a full in session. What we did talk about, and we adjusted, to be clear, is that during this time of hybrid, where we're still at 50% capacity, we do believe that we're going to be able to get you in through the eighth grade at this time. We want to give you the heads up, though, if we go to full, there's absolutely no way, I can't guarantee you transportation at that time. And, and that's because the state has required us to transport a number of students. I, we just can't put them on our bus. We don't have enough buses and enough drivers. So I don't know, John, you want to do anything to add to that?
I, I hear that, but how is it that you're able to accommodate the K through, K through 6? I mean, you know, you should, you, you really should accommodate other students as well. I work, and it's really hard for me to get, you know, my sixth grader, or my eighth grader, and then also my high schooler. I mean, it's, it's not easy for me. And so it would be nice if you could accommodate other people that have, you know, situations like that.
We, we do hear that. And what I would say, you know, when we actually see how many will take the bus, how many we have, we're going to try to work with those families and reconstructing that.
Okay. I, I appreciate it. I, I, I really do. And I know you're working really hard. I really do. I know it's been really.
It, it's not about that, Lynn. I mean, it's okay, because I get it. We get it. It's not a position we want to be in. We're all frustrated with that. We're going to do our very best. I just can't promise you I can make that happen. Right? And so, fair enough to all of us, we'll do the best we can to the hybrid. If we go in full person, we'll do our best to, to transport who we can.
Okay, I appreciate it. Here's my second question. When we do go into full school, like, what is that, phase three?
Phase three, yeah.
Phase three. Will the schedule change, or do you have to manipulate that to change it?
I would suspect at that time, we may have to, we're going to be looking at that over the next few weeks. I don't know, Jamie, you want to answer that?
Yeah, we'll, the secondary schedules will have to change, yes.
Okay.
So that, we're looking at when secondary would start phase three?
Yeah.
Yes. The, right now, their schedule as structured will not suffice when we're back full time.
Elementary will have to change as well, just because we can't handle them on the buses.
Right, so to, quite early.
We don't have enough equipment, yeah.
No, no, no. I'm just talking about the schedule in general, as in their school schedule. That's what I'm asking. It's like.
And that's what I was, during, John was just jumping on to your early point about why we, why can we, how can we, how we can accommodate the elementary, is actually we cannot without changing their start times. So again, because we had the, our, we had 20 buses that could run 75 plus kids. We're now down to 20 buses that can only transport 25 students.
Okay.
So every single bus in the district will be needed to get every elementary school into school, whereas right now, they're on sort of pair times.
Right.
That's how we're able to accommodate, is we're going to actually have to adjust the start times across all four elementary schools to be on separate times, because we'll need every bus to transport that school. But to your second question, though, the academic schedule will have to adjust when we go back to school, when we go back full time in person.
Okay, so you'll have to reconsider all the schedules and redo all those. That's a lot of work. Okay.
Yes, it is, yes.
On, on your part, yeah.
Kind of a nightmare. We all get it. We're, we're all making it through. We'll get it.
I know, I know. I get it, I get it. Honestly, the, the school situation, the, the busing is, is, is difficult for me, so I just need to figure that out.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I don't know if you wanted to, Dr. Austin?
Can we finish up with Josh now?
Yeah.
No, I kept on thinking that he'd, you know, fall off the page, you know, where's your internet? Why'd you lose? No.
Like halftime, go ahead.
No, very clearly, without going to a lot of details, I think we're all at the place where we'd hoped to be at this time. We are finalizing our documents. Both sides will look at the final documents, and I would expect a, a vote for both sides very, very soon.
Okay.
So we, there's no more negotiation sessions, put it that way. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll take a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session, for the purposes of approving minutes of the executive session held on September 9th, 2020, discussing strategy related to collective bargaining negotiations with HEA Unit A and B for the memorandum of agreement for the reopening of schools for the 2020, 2021 school year, and discussing strategy related to collective bargaining negotiations for 2020 to 2023 agreements with administrators, custodian, and maintenance workers, cafeteria workers, transportation workers, and administrative assistants, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Thanks, Michelle. And roll call, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen Benham?
Aye.
Ness Karanti?
Aye.
Carlos De Silva?
Aye.
Libby Lukey?
Aye.
Liza O'Reilly?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, so the.